Coming up next on Get Caught in a Net. You are now tuned in to Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. Where your host, Annette Harris, analyze intriguing life questions and concerns such as, "Do Christians suffer from mental illness?" Have you wondered why they act abnormal? Or you may ask, "What is really going on in their minds?" Do you need an app? Well, keep listening for a biblical understanding of the psychology of the mind.
Hey guys, welcome, welcome, welcome to another wonderful special segment of Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. I'm your girl, your host. I am also the CEO of Get Caught in a Net Incorporated, which is how you're able to watch us on today. I am your certified positive mental health ambassador and author of that nominated bestseller, Surviving a Silent Heartbeat. Listen guys, come on in. I know it's different to see my face on a Friday evening, but I just need a little bit of your time tonight because we want to highlight some individuals in our Authors Unite to Get Caught in the Net. It's been an exciting journey since last year, the publication of my book. I have come in contact with so many different authors and publishers. And so we're going to take the next few sessions, tonight, Wednesday, next Friday, and then the following Wednesday. I think I got it all right. So two Fridays and a Wednesday. We're gonna highlight nominees from Distinguished Authors Guild. But we have to start it off by talking to the founder, to the CEO. And I'm so excited. I love this girl. She just, I tell her all the time, I just love and appreciate her. And I'm gonna bring her in on tonight so that you guys, we don't want to waste any time. We want to talk to her on tonight. Gina Gadsden, Gina Gadsden. I'm wonderful, how about you?
I am excited to get caught in a net.
Well, I'm excited that you're excited. I tell you, I'm truly grateful for this connection that God has made with you and I. And I think Brandy is the catalyst because I think she's the one that introduced us if I'm not mistaken. And so I'm grateful again. There is so much that we want to talk to you about on tonight. We're gonna jump right in now. As I already stated, we're going to highlight some wonderful men and women who have written books, authors, they're new. Some are new to the game, some are, they have like all these books underneath their hats that they have written. But we want to focus on them. And but tonight, I decided I wanted to start everything off, of course, by talking with you first. You are the founder of this wonderful guild and you have so many other things that are going on, the few other hats that you wear. But let's, let's talk tonight. Gina, I don't, I'm trying to see, the first time I had you on. Well, I didn't look that up to get the date, but.
It was maybe about a year and a half ago. And it was a few other authors that were on the show prior as well. I think that was another Author's Week. And it was exciting then.
Yes, yes, yes. And I'm telling you, when you guys hear about Gina, again, some of you may need to be reintroduced to her and some of you know her already, but she, she does such a great work in and of itself with the guild, outside of the guild, just her life. She's just, you know, it's just the whole, she has a big life of giving back, you know? And I love that about her and appreciate that. So let's talk, if you would not mind, for those who are on Mind, Body and Soul with Annette, who never got a chance to meet you before, talk to them about who Gina Gadsden is, if you would not mind. Give us a little bit of background about you and then we can kind of flow into the Office Guild and the other mini hats that you wear.
Well, you know, I'm a mother, I'm a worker, you know, a worker. I'm whatever I need to be, that's what I am, Annette. Whatever people need me for, I'm there for. But I have three beautiful children, all grown. It's a lovely thing, they're all grown.
It's lovely that they're grown?
All grown and out the house, oh my gosh. So I've been the empty nester for years, just recently got married in June. And you know, I'm just a regular old person, you know? But one of the things that I love, I have five children's books. And I never ever thought that I would be an author. I never ever thought that I would write a book. And actually, the first time I even had a taste of writing, I was in the seventh grade. And there was this contest that my teacher gave to all of us, let us all know. There was this contest that if you won the contest, you won a thousand dollars. That was a lot of money back then. I'm talking, I'm gonna age myself, I'm talking back in the seventies. A thousand, I didn't join the contest because I wanted to write, I wanted that thousand dollars.
But I am not mad at you.
But what happened was so, oh my gosh. It ended up, matter of fact, it was 1976 because we had that big snowstorm of 76 where everything shut down, the schools, the grocery stores, you couldn't get out your house. And so by the time we went back to school, the deadline was over. So I missed, we missed the deadline for the competition. So I had wrote this like 15-page poem that I knew was gonna win. I already had spent that thousand dollars and now I get this information that, sorry, the deadline has closed and we can't submit it. So I put that poem in my, I put it, I put it up and I kept it for years. And as I, you know, got older, had children, I moved around a lot and it got lost. But I did recreate it as much as I could remember, I did recreate it. So I do have a few poems that I write as well. But yeah, I never, ever thought I'm gonna be an author. And the inspiration to write my books, which is Alpha's Adventure, came from my daycare. I had a daycare for eight years. And in my daycare, I had two children who could not read. One was in the third grade and one was in the fifth grade. And I'm watching these children get pushed through the system and no one was teaching them how to read. And so in my mind, I'm thinking, if they graduate and they can't read, what are the chances of them being successful adults? So I took it upon myself to teach them how to read. And with that, it just inspired in me, how can I reach children on the masses? With a book, with books. And so that's what inspired Alpha's Adventure.
Oh my goodness, okay, so now you told me some stuff tonight that I didn't know. Now, that's amazing about how you started writing. Now, I did want to ask you the question, okay? So you went back and they said it was too late for you to submit. I'm sure that was heartbreaking for you.
Oh, I was devastated, you give me my thousand dollars.
So wait a minute, so the question I have to ask is, you said you had already spent that thousand dollars. Now, did you already spend it in your mind?
Yes ma'am, I spent that thousand dollars in my mind, yes ma'am. Where is my thousand dollars? Please tell me that this contest, I can't, I took, look, I was like, I put extra work in to do this. I wasn't doing it because I love writing, I wanted that money.
Oh my god, okay, so did you ever, I mean, I don't know, was it a teacher or somebody you had to turn into? Did you, did you ever ask them to look at your poem anyway?
No, I was so devastated. I just took it home and threw it in a drawer, I never picked it up again. But I did, for some reason, I kept it.
Okay, okay.
But when it got lost, somehow it got lost through transition. And it hurt my feelings that it got lost. Like, I really didn't know I cared that much about the poem, but I, really I did. Because I felt like, man, I did a good job with this.
Right, oh my god.
I want, I wanted to be recognized for it and I wanted my thousand dollars.
Right, right, and that's understandable, you took time out to write it too. So you know, it's like you want people to really like grab it, read it and get that thousand dollars.
And I never wrote anything else after that. That was the only, anything that I wrote until Alpha's Adventure.
Wow.
What, thirty years had passed?
Get out, are you serious? See, now, like you said, you never thought that you would be an author, but it was obviously destined. It was deft, it was destined for you.
It had to be because, you know, I never sat down and said, no, I loved reading books. I loved reading, but I never thought, I want to write a book. It never came to my mind that I want to write a book. It wasn't until I saw these children that were struggling and wasn't getting help, that I decided, if I could reach more than one or two children, how can I do that? And through books, I figured I could reach a lot of children. My books are learning books, they have fun while they're learning. And what inspired that, as I was teaching these children how to read, I realized that they learned easier when we were having fun as opposed to sitting them down and, you know, telling them to sound this out and, you know? So that's what inspired me to write the books the way that they are, fun books that teach children.
Yeah, yeah, and that makes a difference because obviously you, you figured out, I can get, you're trying to get on their level and then maybe have them to absorb more that way, something that they can relate to, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So if it's fun, that's something they can relate to as opposed to you down the hammer on them. So, okay, all right, interesting. Now, you wrote the book, I mean, you started writing the books, you know, because you were trying to help them. Now, were you successful in helping those that couldn't read?
Yes, they did learn how to read. And, you know, I, it's, it's just so hard to see children struggling and no one was there to help them. I just, I felt like I can't sit back and not do anything. I, with my daycare, I felt, once children hit my door, they should leave out with more than what they came with.
There you go, I love it.
And so I made sure that there was a structured curriculum. I helped them with their homework, I, you know, taught them things, I took them places they, they probably would never have been able to go. And, you know, it was just, they are sponges. And to me, I was the first contact to really mold their minds. And so I wanted to make sure it was in a positive way.
Yeah, yeah, and you did that, and I'm grateful. You know, as you're talking, you know, how long did you have your daycare?
Eight years.
Eight years, now that, that's amazing to me because I appreciate how God directed you. Because unfortunately, you have individuals who have the daycares or they just go into it for money reasons, you know, they just want to get the money. And then you also have those who are using, and I've been seeing this so much, I don't know if you've seen it, so much lately, they're using the daycare almost like as a cover. And I forgot where this was, where, there was a couple of them that, I think maybe New York? Might have been New York.
Yes, the Fentanyl.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, you, you hear about that so much. And I did come across people who didn't even like kids, they didn't like children and they had daycares. Wow, we, we had to take certain classes that we were required to take. And so I met a lot of other daycare providers. And it's, it's like, why do you go into something that you don't even like?
Right.
But again, it's just like you said, for the, for the paycheck.
Mm-hmm, for the money, and that, that's interesting. But to me, that, that's a little bit, that's scary to me. Because children, like you mentioned, they were, they're sponges. And, you know, may sound cliche-ish, but they are our tomorrow. You know, so you, you want to make sure that they're being molded correctly and, and being nurtured, you know, correctly. So, yeah, okay, that's a whole nother show talking about.
That's a whole nother show.
And I, I was about to go, I was about to go in that direction. Let me see here, who's on tonight? Let me recognize some of you individuals. Natalie says Gina is awesome, totally agree with that. Let's see, Jelani, Missionary Jelani, thanks for coming in. She said, what's the name of the book?
Alpha's Adventure, there's five books in the series. There's Alpha's Adventure at School, Alpha's Adventure at Happy Lake, Alpha's Adventure at Lunch, Alpha's Adventure at Fun Time Speedway, and Alpha's Adventure, I can't even remember the last one, but it's, it's, it's five books in the series.
Five books in the series.
They are on Amazon.
Okay, this is gonna be a good station break, I'm gonna type it in, where, where can they find it? They can go to Amazon?
They could go to Amazon or they can go to the website. The website is www alpha's adventure books dot com.
Okay, Alpha's Adventure.
Books. Dot com.
Books dot com, okay, I want to make sure I have that. I'm gonna type that, the website for you, Jelani, so that you can, yep, there it is, Alpha's Adventure. So let me place this also on the, on the banner. So you guys can see it, alphasadventurebooks.com. And you can also go to Amazon, she said. So if you look for Alpha's Adventure, you will see the series, I'm sure, right? All, all the.
Or you can type in my name, I think it's easier if you type in my name because you type in Alpha's Adventure, a whole bunch of books with Alpha's Adventure name and it comes up. But if you type in my name, all five will come up.
Okay, Gina Gadsden. I'm doing this now, I'm gonna put the link, I pull it up. Because we want, yep, it's right here, all, she's right, see? I told you, she's good, she's real good. Let me see if I can copy this as I'm talking, I'm doing like two things at once. So, yeah, this is a good place for you to go and to be able to connect with her, get her books. Those of you who are kindergarten teachers or daycare, you know, instructors, owners, this, this is good for you also. And I, I think it would be beneficial to help. But yeah, that, that was very interesting to me and somebody confirmed that it was New York and you did as well, where that situation was happening. Because I think it was like back to back and I was like, what is really happening here? I think one child ended up dying, right?
Yes, and five went to the hospital.
Okay, oh, that is just so sad, the babies, they're so innocent, my god, and they.
I know.
Precious, and they're inhaling that stuff.
We have to pray for our babies because they are, it's all our war on them.
That's so true, that's very true, yeah. Jelani says here, "My students love when I teach with fun." Yeah, okay, I hear you, yeah, definitely. Yeah, Natalie, my heart breaks with it as well, hearing about those situations. But I'm grateful and I'm not trying to push her up or pub her up, but I am grateful for people like Gina who has the heart. Because there are others who have hearts, you know, as well, that wants to make sure that our children are, are being helped and not hurt. So, all right, so let's, let's, let's move forward here. Okay, so we have Alpha's Adventure, You Never Thought You'd Be an Author. And then, so can I move into the Guild? How did we, how do we get here? From a person.
There's always a story in that.
It has to be, I mean, for a person who never thought they would be an author and now you have this, you know, this Authors Guild and everything else. So tell, talk, talk to me, how do we get to from that point?
Again, this is something, you, you, I have to say this first, when God has a plan for you, you don't know how you're gonna get there, but you're gonna get there. You're definitely gonna get there. So I can't take, really take a hundred percent credit for the idea. Because a friend of mine and I, she's an author as well and a radio host, she, we, we got together and we wanted to come together and bring something to the authors that was different from the norm, the book fairs, the book sales and, and things like that that they normally do. And so she said, you know, I have an idea that I've had for years, I just have never acted on it. And so she told me, she said, I want to do an award show for authors. And I said, oh, that's really nice. So originally, it was three of us. So you know, the nickname for Distinguished Authors Guild is DAG, right? It, that was not the name. In the beginning, it was our first initials, it was Deborah, Andre and Gina. That's how we came up with the DAG. Well, the first author, Andre, he got so busy, he couldn't commit to DAG. So he had to bow out. So now Deborah and I are sitting there like, okay, what do we do now? We don't have the A, we don't have Andre. So I said, I thought about it and I said, you know what? Let's change the name, we had everything already made up with DAG already. And so I said, let's call it Distinguished Authors Guild. And that's where the name, Distinguished Authors Guild, came from.
Yeah, okay, okay, I see you, I see you, all right? I love it, but you know what? Again, like you said, when God tells you to do something, you don't necessarily see the full picture, you just go with it and you have to just go with it. He's gonna work everything out. And I love that name, Distinguished Authors Guild, it sounds so distinguished.
Absolutely.
Pun wasn't intended.
That had to have been the name it was meant for because like, who would have thought our initials would have been DAG?
Right.
You know, and, and it panned out to be Distinguished Authors Guild.
Right, right, I love it, I love it. And now, you know, if you talk about it, I mean, it seems like it, it's a Guild or an organization that has been all over the world, that, that's just what I, you know, pick up from it. So that means it's going all over the world. I see you, Apostle Hunt has joined us, he says, hey ladies, and he shared, thank you so much, I appreciate that. And he said, God knew, yes.
I didn't know, Deb didn't know, Andre didn't know, but God knew.
God knew, God knew, and it's such a wonderful, wonderful organization. Listen, I want to take this time out real quick to let you guys know, this is our segment. We're starting off our segment, Authors Unite to Get Caught in a Net. We're starting off the segment focusing on Distinguished Authors Guild, as we've just been talking about. But here's the founder, one of the founders of this Guild. And so we, we're starting off with her because we're going to focus on the nominees for 2023, the Literary Award nominees. And so we had to start off, of course, with Gina and then we're gonna talk at 6:30 and then at seven tonight with two nominees, that will be Teresa Hickman and Tekisha Wade. There are so many names floating in my mind, but I had to get them right for tonight. And then we'll come back to you on next Wednesday, next Friday, and then the following Wednesday. We are going to continue on talking to the nominees. It is such a wonderful experience to be a part of. And so I want to talk to the office about their projects, about their books. And this is what you are seeing, you're seeing us in different time in the evening. We're normally on in the afternoon, midweek. But we, we adjusted so that we could be able to accommodate these individuals. So that's why we're on, you say, why isn't that on tonight? That's why, all right? So make sure you tag individuals into it, they can watch it live or they can watch it later at their, you know, own time and, and you know, their own timeframe. And then also, if you wouldn't mind throwing up the heart, the love button, the care button, and then sharing. We saw that Apostle Hunt shared and the rest of you, can you please make sure you click the share button on this particular live feed? We're also live on my YouTube channel, Get Caught in a Net Incorporated. And so the other Facebook page that we're live on right now is Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. So you have a couple of different ways to listen and watch us on tonight. All right, so Gina, 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 Gina. All right, so, okay, so you established this, I love that story that came behind it. And so what did you hope to accomplish with this? I mean, I know the, the name changed, did your focus or your vision change for when you initially started this Guild?
No, the vision never changed. Our ultimate goal was to celebrate authors, to, you know, really give them that day where we celebrate the hard work that they put into books and to choose those award-winning books. And that, that has never changed, even though the name changed, that, the goal never changed. And along with that, we wanted to also help college students, which is why we give the scholarships, we want to continue to put those writers out there. We give scholarships to freshman students in college who are in the, the writing field. And we've done that since day one and that's, that's near and dear to my heart.
Yeah, wow, you know, this is still amazing to me, you know why, don't you? Because you said, you never thought you'd be an author. And here you are pushing and promoting everybody else as authors, which is absolutely wonderful. I mean, we, you found, you found your niche, you found what you're supposed to do and you're doing it, you're doing it well. I love that concept of the scholarships. And I have been watching you down, you know, through the years in your promotion of it. I think it's wonderful because sometimes, you know, our students go off to college, you know? Maybe they do and maybe they don't know what they're going to do or major in. So sometimes, you know, looking at organizations like yours may help them, may encourage them. Maybe they started off writing that long essay like Gina did, you know? And then they hadn't written in so long. And maybe, you know, something like this comes along and they see that someone is interested in them, you know, as a writer or what have you, oh, they're gonna help me, okay, cool, you know? And I can kind of push them, you know, forward a little bit. So I see Brandy, we just talked about you earlier, Brandy. They're powerhouses, back at you, sweetie. And we were just appreciating you for connecting us and introducing us to each other. That was such a blessing of God. So the scholarships, okay, did the scholarships start immediately when you started the Guild? Or did it like kind of come about as time went on?
That was what we put together. When we sat down and we talked about what Distinguished Authors Guild is going to look like, that was definitely one thing that we implemented from, from the very beginning.
Okay, okay, well, you know, that, that's good. I mean, and, and it's, it's okay to have visions and goals at the beginning, then to add on if you need it. But I didn't know that it started out initially as such. So those that you have helped, have you heard back from them? What has been the response of those who have received scholarships?
I have heard back, usually within that year, I haven't heard, you know, usually, they'll keep in contact, but you know, they get busy, they're in school. And we, they, I have them send in a video. And we implement, we implement that into the award show so that they can talk about how that scholarship has helped them.
Oh, okay, so prior recipients, they will do a video?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
And that, and that, that hopefully will inspire other youths to continue with their education.
Right, right, okay. And now how do you come about to decide who will receive the scholarships? Do you have like a committee or something set up? Is that a process that you can share with us?
There is a form that's filled out and it's sent in and we just randomly choose. They do have to verify that, send verification that they are in school. And that's pretty much it. We just randomly choose, if we get five nominees or five applications for the scholarship, we'll just randomly choose one of the five or, the plan is to get ten scholarships of a thousand dollars. So that is the goal, to reach that goal. And I know I've, I've been praying on it, we've only been able to give out one scholarship the previous three years. And I know eventually we're gonna get to that goal.
Okay, okay, all right, well, hey, yeah, because that was gonna be my next question. Does the number change, you know, each year or, or what, or how does that work? But, okay, so you're trying to work.
The scholarships will grow.
Yes, 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 I love it, I love it. Oh my goodness, now y'all see what I'm talking about, this big old heart this woman has, I, I love it, I love it. And those that work with you, of course, you know, we, we, we just appreciate. Because you could have somebody that you went into. Cause you could have somebody that you went into with this and it, no, I want to do that. I ain't giving out no money. But obviously you all are on the same page, which is uh an excellent thing, an excellent thing. Um, so what is really your motivation and your passion? Can you tell me that?
Listen, when you come to this award show, if you don't walk out of it motivated, you, you must, you're a cold fish. I'm, I'm telling you, that is what motivates me. It motivates me because this, this whole process is very, it's very tedious. There's a lot of wheels turning and there's a, even you on your end, you're a nominee. There's a lot of things that you're doing on your end, you know, as a nominee. And so we have to pull all of this together and have it ready to go by November eighth. So there's a lot of things that's going on. There's a lot of people working behind the scenes. I appreciate my producer, Greg Gray. He has been there since day one. He, he has, he produces the show. He's good at what he does. He's excellent at what he does. And we promoted on our podcast as well, Dope Living TV Live. I appreciate him so much. That's my, that's my big brother. I also appreciate Dr. Stevens, uh Carolyn Stevens. It, again, this was a fluke because we didn't meet. It was the, someone who we met through. I actually ran it, uh, connected with a young lady who was supposed to be my PR. And so she connected me. She had, we had this whole plan together. This was last year. We had this whole plan together for DAG for last year, twenty twenty-two. And she was gonna promote it and we were gonna put it on this network. And we were three weeks out. And all of a sudden, communication stopped. I didn't hear from her. She wasn't answering the phone. I couldn't. But before the communication stopped, she connected me with Dr. Stevens, Dr. Carolyn Stevens in her uh media network. We never had spoken, she and I. So when she didn't hear from the young lady and I didn't hear from the young lady, Dr. Carolyn picked up the phone and she called me. She said, I don't know what's going on with, with so-and-so, but we need to get these wheels turning because we're three weeks out. What are we gonna do? And so we put our heads together and then we were scrambling, trying to get this done. And so we, we connected and we got it done. Everything was put on her network. The uh, the authors were able to do a bio that ran for a whole year on BHC Media Network. Um, she did the red carpet interviews. And it was, again, we never heard from this person moving forward. God was there. He connected she and I through this person. And then it was, that, that was the season for that person and she was gone. But we continue with our relationship. And I love the fact that the authors are able to get on the network, which is on Fire TV, YouTube, um, Apple TV with over five mil, fifty million viewers.
Uh, okay, okay. All right. Well, you know what? You talked about Dr. Stevens. That, she is on it. Do you hear me? On it. And that, and that's beautiful. So yeah, obviously, you know, sometimes when people come into your life, you know, um, it may not be for a lengthy amount of time. Uh, maybe they're, they're just for a certain amount of time. And maybe that was the case with that individual, but God knows all things. He knows all things and he knows how to do it. He does it very well. Um, so he didn't, he didn't leave you. He didn't leave you out there.
Right.
Yeah. He blessed you to be able to connect with somebody who, you know, I don't know what the other person did and I ain't talking about them, but I, I know what Dr. Stevens is doing. So we're, we're just appreciative of um of what she's bringing to the table.
Truly a blessing.
Um, Brandy says, tell her to tap into Quantum Publishing to donate some media to help promote the scholarships. Uh-oh.
Absolutely.
See? See, there you go. You know, connections are a blessing. You hear me? Yes, I love it. Thanks, Brandy, for that comment. Uh, make sure you, uh, make sure you do that.
I'm very familiar with Quantum Publishing, Quantum, well, Quantum Photography because they did my wedding. And they, it was, oh my gosh, I just, I hit the floor when I saw what Brandy did with my wedding. It was so beautiful. I'm telling you, that girl has talent.
Oh, my God. Talent beyond what I can even think of. It's just so, it's a freak. And I can't even look at, I'm gonna say this on the air, I can't look at no other photographer now.
And you could say it, say it loud and clear, cause that's the best.
I mean, the best, okay? And she's, she's a joy to work with. She cracks me up. Okay, this is the last one. Okay, this is the last one. And it never is the last one until.
Also did that, that photo that you shot across, that's from Quantum? That's, that's, that's my Photoshop.
Yes, that's right.
Uh, Alpha's Adventure that she.
Yes, you're right. You're right. That is so true. Yeah, she's, uh, she's the, the person behind. I'm telling you, she's behind a lot of these, these uh um, pictures, these events and, and I, I just love her. I just love her. Apostle Hunt, uh, Hunt says, the absolute, let me show this, the absolute best. I totally agree. I totally agree. And God has tremendously blessed her in her area. So Quantum, Quantum Publishing, uh Gina's gonna, she gonna do that. She gonna take care of that. Uh, let's, let's move forward. I want to talk to you about your, or ask you, should I say, about your supporters down through the years and the naysayers. And how you did or do handle them?
Hmm. You know, I don't really feel like I have a lot of naysayers. Um, I, I have a lot of supporters, even when I get to a point where I feel like, you know what, this, this is the last year. I, I can't do this too much. I always get people to inspire me, to motivate me, to keep me going. I'm telling you, it was difficult the first, very first year because we went virtual, not by, uh, because that was planned, but because of the pandemic. Initially, we were to have our first Distinguished Authors Guild at the DeSable Museum in Chicago. And I'm telling you, the day that we were to go down and take the deposit, the very next day, everything shut down. And so again, I had to put my thinking cap on to figure out how we were gonna do this. And I said, and, and, and uh my business partner Deb, she was like, well, let's just wait until the pandemic is over. And I said, I think we can do this virtually.
Okay.
And we sat down and we, you know, did a lot of the planning, thought about how it would work virtually, and it worked well. As a matter of fact, it, it actually opened the doors for authors outside of our area to be a part of it. Because now it's virtual, you don't have to be in person. And so we had a lot of authors that are all over the, the, the United States, from every city just about. And that gave more of an opportunity. So the first two years were virtual. And then we went live for the first time last year in Las Vegas.
Yeah, okay, all right. Oui. Uh, I see somebody over here commenting saying that, I'm talking about that online award show. Uh, she said, that show was amazing. And now let me, let me tell you this. Now, I, I saw the advertisement for the Vegas uh location last year. I was under the impression that, or did I read it? It was first time. I was under the impression that you had been in, it had been in Vegas for a few years. I don't know why I had that when I first saw it. I was like, oh, this is cool. She's going back to Vegas or whatever. And this, I didn't realize, I mean, I had to read further, that it was the first time. And I was like, that is so way cool because, you know, you're able to branch out. You know, the online, I think, kind of helped you, like you said, with that. Um, but that, that was, that was like amazing to me for you to take it all the way to Vegas.
Yes, and that was, this is our second year in Vegas and it was such a success. We had so many people to come out and support. We had a lot of people from Illinois and Indiana to come out. It, it, it was just so touched, so heartfelt to see so many people come from so many different places to support Distinguished Authors Guild. And I'm telling you, the feedback, just, you talk about what motivates me. That feedback just gave me more energy and more inspiration to keep going.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm sure that that can kind of light, light a little fire under you. And make sure you go forward, cause like you said, it's a lot that goes into it. And I'm sure it can kind of get a little overwhelming sometimes, but having that um, motivation and that push behind you and, and people saying stuff like this, last year's show in Vegas was off the chain, you know, that's what that. That, I'm sure that'll push you forward. Um, let's see here. Is that Joe McCord? He said, her honoring of local authors is uncanny. Yeah. I, I love it. And you know what? I think that you and I kind of have that same spirit in terms of reaching out to local, local people. You know, we can on social media day in, day out, you know, we see the stars, we see the movie stars and this, that, and the other. So you, and then you have these different talk shows. Of course, they're gonna get, you know, uh, the stars on there. They don't necessarily focus on the local people, you know, a whole lot. Um, and that's my mentality as far as my show is concerned. You know, I try to reach out to those who people maybe either overlook, they don't know about, um, and you know, trying to bring light to, to what it is that they're doing. Um, because they can make a, they can make a difference, you know, in this world. And, and I, I love that you have that same, that same mentality and that same drive uh, to do that, to bring that, that light uh to local authors and those who are doing, you know, work like right around us. You know, we kind of open up our eyes and see. So yeah, that's a, that's a good thing. Um, so yeah, let's see. Okay, so you say you don't really have the naysayers or whatever and we, we are appreciative of the supporters. Um, a personal question. Do you ever, have you ever doubted yourself uh down through this journey?
Absolutely.
What did you do about it?
Well, prayed.
Okay.
I pray. I'm gonna tell you. Last year, I prayed a lot. I was on my knees a lot with this show because it was the first time in Vegas. Think about it. I'm in Indiana. I'm trying to put on a show in Las Vegas, Nevada. And I did not have a lot of my, I didn't have a lot of, of what I needed two months before the show.
Wow.
I didn't have my entertainment. I didn't have a venue. I didn't even know if my producer was gonna be able to come out to Vegas. It was so up in the air and I was praying and you know what? God said, your show is gonna be in Vegas. I told, I tell all my friends, I said, I had given up with being in Vegas and I was just thinking about, let me just go back virtual. And I, every time I prayed, I heard God say, it's gonna be in Vegas. And so I kept pushing. I ended up with the venue three weeks before the show. I ended up with.
No pressure.
Oh, my gosh. Joseph George, he's uh, he's one of the entertainers. He blew the roof off the house. He, he did such a wonderful job and he has always been supportive. He, I just love him to death. He'll be here again this year. And he came through at the last minute. I'm telling you, there was nothing in place and it just all came, it all fell into place because I, I'm telling you, I prayed so much. I'm like, Lord, help me with this because I can't see it. So I, yes, I doubted myself the whole way until I was actually in Vegas and had everything, you know, set in place that I realized, okay, we're gonna really do this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, guess, all that proved that you are human.
Yes.
That proved you're human. And, and then God is, God is infinite and we're finite and we just let him do his work. And so.
That's all we have to do is sit back and let him do his work.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you kept hearing while you were praying, cause you could have been closed off to it. You know, I'm glad you kept hearing that it was gonna be in Vegas, you know, cause God, he, he again, wants to be glorified. Um, so what difference do you endeavor to make? You've made a lot of difference. You made a lot of changes in individuals' lives, but what, what other differences do you want to make? Maybe something that you haven't um, done already, uh, whether it's with your books, um, being an author or with the guild or anything else. What, what, what differences do you, Gina, endeavor to make?
And that, I, I'm, I just want to make a difference, a positive impact on people. Whether it's with the books, I feel like there's a positive impact that I'm making on children with my children's books, a positive impact I'm making with the Distinguished Authors Guild. Um, I, I'm, I'm watching this grow and I know it's gonna be even bigger. It's gonna be even bigger. Um, I also have real estate and I want to make a difference in individuals having homes. You know, nice homes to be in. And I, I just feel like every, e- everybody, if you want a home, you should have, you should be able to have a home.
Yeah.
And, and that's something that, um, you know, a lot of people don't know that I have real estate as well, but.
I didn't know.
Yeah. And, and the whole point of me getting into real estate was to teach individuals the importance of having a piece of property. It's an asset. And a lot of people don't realize that, what an asset it is. It's money in the bank, when you, you, whenever you need it. And so that's the whole purpose. There's been some ups and downs with that. I got some individuals that I, I tried to, you know, help get into that. Um, but, you know, it didn't pan out, but us, even with the bad apples, there's a lot of good apples.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. That's beautiful. That was a beautiful answer. I love that. I love that. Listen, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm on the Gina team, all right? So y'all keep pushing. Oh, Gina, I am doing that.
We already a team and that.
Okay, okay. Got that. We, we right here. We right here. Uh, Joe said, that's awesome. Um, and I totally agree. Apostle Hunt says ministry. Definitely, definitely. Um, Brandy says, when God bless Gina, he blesses the community. Come through now. Come through. You, you, I couldn't have said it better myself, Brandy. Thank you. I totally agree with that. You know, as we're wrapping up this uh, uh, segment, um, and going to talk to the other two nominees on tonight, um, let me ask you um, to tell us a little bit more about the gala. We want to push, we want to, cause we want to push that also. Talk, just, just take your time and talk about the gala and everything, all that's, that's coming forth with it.
And that I have butterflies in my stomach. I am so excited. This gala is, it, it's, it's just so wonderful. It's just that, a gala. When you think of gala, you think of fun, good time, elegance. This is a red affair. The ladies will be in their beautiful red evening gowns. They'll have the men there in their suits. Uh, we'll have live entertainment. Uh, we have Joseph George, who will be performing again. If you have not seen his performance, go to last year's uh uh, award show. Everything is on the Distinguished Authors Guild Facebook page. All of our shows are there. And you will see what you're in store for. We also have a new entertainer coming. Um, up and coming out of Chicago. Um, his name is Raphael Miller. And he'll, he's an R and B artist. He will be performing as well. So the the, uh, uh, ticket holders are gonna get a lot. When I say it's gala, it is a gala. The tickets are on sale on Eventbrite, Cold Word, Distinguished Authors Guild. Um, you could purchase either the ticket for the gala and the award show, or you can purchase the ticket just for the award show. Um, but they're both listed on there. And all the VIP ticket uh holders receive a DAG bag. That DAG bag is a fifty dollar value. There's a DAG t-shirt. It includes uh Chick-fil-A gift cards, um, the DAG pins, um, what's in there? There's a lot of goodies in there. Keychains. It's, it's just, it's our way of giving back and saying, thank you for being a part and, and uh actually, you know, uh, being a part of the Distinguished Authors Guild. So it, it's gonna be so much fun in it. We have so much fun that night. And the best thing, the authors get to network with each other. Now they have new areas that they can reach out to. We have people, authors do more than write books. We all more than write books. You know, you have your podcast, you write books, but you have your podcast and whatever else you do. So they get to net. So they get to network and go in different directions. We have authors that have won the Distinguished Authors Guild that were picked up by their community school, their school community. We have authors that were picked up by fraternities. We have authors that were picked up by magazines. We have authors that have started their own podcast. We have authors that didn't know how to get out there and market themselves that are taking the world by storm now, right Natalie? This is, this is what we we do with Distinguished Authors Guild. It doesn't just end that night. We continue to help those authors even past that night of the gala. Wherever we can help them, we connect them with different individuals to help them get to where they're trying to get to. And that's the whole part of it. This is a community.
Yeah, 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 I believe it, I believe it. Oh, this is so wonderful. And you know, you ain't doing nothing but give me more and more pumped up. I'm getting more and more pumped up. This this is a blessing, such a blessing. And I I, you know, I don't take it for granted, being my book being nominated. I was shocked when I did get the email, because I actually, I kind of like forgotten about a little bit. But I was like, oh, wow. So it was a it was a pleasant surprise. And, you know, connecting, like you said, we're gonna be able to network when we're there. But even now, connecting and net with the other authors is a blessing, I I I feel. So this is, this is wonderful that you are blessed. All God has been you to bless us with this opportunity. And, you know, like I said, just to be nominated is 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 wonderful in and of itself. Of course, we all hope we win, but you know, just being. Natalie says here, you you want to experience this gala, this gala. Yeah, I, because she, this is like her, what, her fourth?
She is a two-time award-winning author. And this is her third book that she submitted. So she's a nominee for twenty twenty-three as well. She's in the romance department and I'm telling you, that girl, she has taken off like a rocket. I had her on our podcast, I don't know, maybe a year and a half, maybe two years ago.
Okay.
Came in and she talked about how, I don't know how to market my book. I I I don't know how to get it out there. And we gave her a session on this, on the podcast. And I I've come to a lot of her book signings.
Okay.
She's now doing not just book signings, but she has a workshop. She's on social media, just promoting, promoting, making you laugh. She's, you wouldn't even believe that two years ago, she didn't know how to market her book. Now she's teaching others how to write and market their book.
Giving back, paying it forward.
What we do with Distinguished Authors Guild. And I get a lot of authors that call me up and ask for advice. My advice is free. I don't charge for advice, I know a lot of people do. But my advice is free because I needed help. I didn't know anything about writing a book when I started. And I, my publisher was more of a publisher, she was a mentor. And she she taught me the ins and outs and the ropes. And I appreciate her. And I said to myself, I told God, you blessed me with her and I'm gonna do the same. I'm gonna bless others.
Beautiful, beautiful. See, paying it forward, giving it back.
Right.
I I I love it. I love the mentality, I love the the spirit. You have a beautiful spirit. Joe says here, I, it was an eye-opening read and that, oh, oh, that's so sweet. Joe, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. You know, you, when you put out things, and I know you said Natalie said she didn't know how to publish her book. Man, and I was, that was last year with the writing itself was, it was very interesting.
I know, I have books, so I can relate to the authors and what they go through. And people don't understand, you pick up that finished product, that finished book, and you talk about how well it was written and what a good book it is. But you don't see the other side of what that author had to go through to get that book completed and on the shelf.
Yes, Lord, because there's a lot, lot of background in that, right? But God knows that he was able to take us through and to bring us through to where we are now. Like you said, we didn't, we didn't see it initially, you know? And the big picture, God, God has it all. He's got it all in his hands. So long as we do what he wants us to do, we'll, I think we'll be all right. Gina, this has been tremendous. I appreciate you as always. You're such a sweetheart, such an encourager.
You know, I always get encouraged and I love speaking with you and being on the podcast.
Well, thank you, thank you. You you're, I want to encourage you to continue, to continue what you're doing. You are affecting in a good way so many lives. You're inspiring individuals and, you know, you you're kind of pushing them, you know, which is a good thing. Sometimes we need that push. But you're such a blessing to the body of Christ and 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 others. We, I just want to say thank you. Just thank you for being you and for having that huge heart that I've been talking about all night long. So we thank you, we we continue to pray for you and bid you Godspeed.
Well, I want to thank God for putting me in the position and guiding me, because I could not do this without him.
That's right, that's right. That's so true, that's so true. Yeah, can can definitely cannot leave our God. He is our strength and our hope. So, yeah, this this is wonderful. Natalie says, thank you, Gina. Yeah, we, you know, just give her, give her her flowers, give her her flowers now.
Thank you, guys.
As we're ending, can you give us maybe just a line or two, final encouraging words to those who are listening and that will watch this later?
Sure. Whatever it is, if it's writing a book, starting a business, whatever it is that you have the inspiration to do, do it. I was afraid when I opened up my daycare, you always have that fear that, is it going to be successful? You will never know if you're going to succeed or fail unless you do it. And that was the thing that gave me my inspiration. When I opened my daycare, I said, if I don't do it, I will forever have in my mind, what if?
Yeah.
Could it? Maybe I would have. And so I had to see for myself. If I if I was gonna fail, I had to see for myself that I was going to fail. So whatever it is that you.
Right.
Do, do it and keep doing it, because you're gonna run into some obstacles. Everything that I'm doing, there there, there has been obstacles. So keep pushing. The obstacles may slow you down, but they should not stop you.
Ooh, watch out now. I'll, oh, I love that. Those were good words. Ain't nothing left to do but do it. All right, thank you again for taking time out on tonight. And I I know your schedule is busy, but I'm so glad we were able to accommodate you on this evening. And we'll see you soon. We're gonna go and talk to our next guest and thank you again. And thank you for connecting me with these authors as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, all right, guys, as Gina's exiting on tonight, I am going to bring in our next guest on this evening. And as they're in the back backstage, virtual waiting room for us, let me, let me, let me, let me bring her on. You guys are, you guys are really in for a treat with these, with the dag, which is Distinguished Author Guild nominees. And I have a whole slew of them lined up. But we're gonna go with two of them on tonight. I am bringing to the stage Teresa Smith Hickman. And we have her on this evening. How are you doing?
I'm doing good, how are you today?
I'm doing well, I am doing so well. If you see, if you see in the little corner, little right corner, that's the, her book, I Can Just Try. Oh, my goodness, I'm so excited about this, because I was reading a little bit of your bio on this evening. And I said, I want to, I can't wait to interview her. But did you have a good day today?
I did, thanks for asking, how about yourself?
Wonderful, wonderful. Just a little busy, but that's, you know, that's par for the course, but.
That's what we do.
Exactly. Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
With the Distinguished Authors Guild. And we're gonna, just gonna talk to you tonight about your book, you know, about the nomination and and talk to you a little bit about the gala, upcoming gala and what you're looking forward to. But let me just read a little bit, guys, about Ms. Teresa on tonight. She's the proud author of the children's book, I Can Just Try, and the founder and CEO and educator of Mother Dove's Academy LLC. Now, look, I better go ahead and put my eyes on, because I I knew I should have did that first. All right, she introduced her character Terry to the world with a mission to inspire more girls and boys just like Terry. Her children's book, I Can Just Try, is about a young girl named Terry who always thought she could not do anything until she was inspired to just try. And matter of fact, Gina just got through talking about that when she was on here. Not the book, but the concept. This inspiring illustrated book was written to help children just like Terry to change their way of thinking by no longer saying, I can't. But instead affirming and believing, I can, all I have to do is just try. Terry is now ready to inspire more children just like her by leading by example. Okay, I'm gonna stop right there, because I have a couple of questions in here, all right? That I'm gonna throw out at you. So this, this is wonderful. Do me a quick favor, give us a little tidbit, a little background about Teresa, maybe on the personal level, and then I want to jump into talking about your book.
Absolutely. So, yes, as she said, I am Teresa Smith Hickman, but affectionately known as Mother Dove. So, yes, I am Mother Dove. And I am an educator, a speaker, author, as we all know, as well as an entrepreneur. And my mission and purpose is to really just inspire our young girls and boys to continue to believe in themselves. I've been teaching over about fifteen years. I've been in the education field now for that long. And it's just been a blessing to know, like, that my little old self, little old me has made a difference in so many children's lives. And that's what I want to continue to do. And so that's why I wrote my children's book, but I also opened up my own tutoring business as well.
Okay, Mother Dove, huh? Mother Dove. I like that name, that's cute. Really cute. And you talking, you you say you've been in about, how many, how long, fifteen years?
I've been working with children for fifteen years now.
You look like you're about fifteen. I'm like, really? Okay, all right, I'll see you, I'll see you. Black don't crack. Let's talk about Terry, let's talk about Terry. Now, you said you started this with a mission to inspire more girls and boys just like Terry. When, so was it fifteen years ago that you started with this motivation? Or did it come out like after that?
So it it's interesting. So the book I actually, and I tell this story quite often when people ask, the book was actually written back in two thousand and seventeen.
Whoa.
I know, right? But it didn't come out until two thousand and twenty-one. And I truly believe that it was God's timing to say, not then, but now. He, it was during the time where we were still in the pandemic and things, and kids were just giving up on themselves, they weren't even trying, you know, just being on the virtual platform, having to go back to school, be in and out of. It was just a lot going on during this time. And so I heard from God and he told me, Teresa, it's time to release this book because you have to inspire our children. You have to tell them and let them know that they can do anything if they just try, right? And so Terry came into the picture and she's like, we about to do this, you know? We about to make a difference in this world on a greater level, more than my myself can just do, right? I really have a vision and for her and where she's gonna go. And so, yeah, that's.
That's interesting. So that's about a good, what, six years before it came out?
Before, when I first wrote it, yeah.
When you first wrote it, right. Amazing. And I I love the the concept you said, you know, not then, now. You know, we, and we don't know, and Gina just talked about this earlier. You know, God has a plan, of course, and we may not always see the entire plan. You know, initially, we just have to go, you know, it's almost like you're kind of going blindly. But if you know that God is leading and directing you, then you know that you're gonna be all right. We we have to keep telling ourselves that, you know, because that that human part gonna jump in there some some kind of way, like, really? You've been sitting on this book for this long and, you know, whatever. And and sometimes it'll bring about, I know for myself, maybe bring about a little anxiety, think, okay, I need to hurry up and do this. I need to hurry up and do this. But it's still God's timing. And so when it came out, you talked about the pandemic and you are so right. So many kids, so many children were giving up, whether it was the situation that forced them to. You know, unfortunately, a lot of our children lost parents, guardians, you know, during the time of COVID. And so that could affect other areas of their life. And so I I love, I I just love the title itself. I can, all I have to do is try.
That's it.
It it's, you can't get any simpler than that. But something simple like that, sometimes people think it has to take a whole lot, you know, to do something. But that those those words, that statement right there is enough to push and 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 encourage, you know, our our young people. So who is Terry, though?
Who is Terry? You really don't know? Terry is me. She is me as a little girl.
Okay, okay.
Tell people that, they're like, oh, really? And I remember the very first time. So I also do story times around the city of Chicago and virtually as well as in person. And so I remember the very first time this little student told, asked me, is Terry you? And I was like, yes. And it just warmed my heart that she got that, that she, like, she really figured that out. Because at first I was like, I don't want to tell a whole lot of people like. But then I started to embrace the fact that people really do enjoy hearing that you wrote the book about your life, your story, your experiences and things like that, and how you have really overcome and continue to push yourself and do what you need to do in order to get where you are. And so I started to tell people, but yes, Terry is me as a little girl, that little girl who who was, I'm afraid to just do things, but because of my village, because of the people in my life who encouraged me and pushed me, you know, I got a lot of hats now, a lot of hats, you know? But we doing it.
I get, I was your bio, because I haven't had the opportunity to be blessed with with reading your book. But I read the bio and I'm like, mm-hmm, Terry. I think I know who Terry is, but I'm gonna ask her, I wanted to see. And and then I was gonna ask for the history. So maybe tell us a little, you started talking about it a little bit already. Maybe what's the history behind it? You know, is it like loosely based on your life or fully based on your life?
Loosely based, fully based, it's it's a little mixture of both. So I do, I do play basketball and I currently am a basketball coach. Basketball is my thing, right? And so that's why, that's why she's playing basketball, right? And at that time, when I was a little girl, you know, I had, you know, my brothers, people in my circle, they were always playing and it was kind of, you know, it was tough. But I just kept going out there. I was always the shortest kid in my class, the shortest kid on the court, you know, just, it was, it was interesting. And so people, you know, try to think, you know, she can't do this. Oh, oh, I'm gonna show you, right? So I just kept trying to push myself and and encouraging myself. And then I had, so Ariel, she's another, I didn't put the real character's name, but Ariel is a in a girl like who pushed and influenced me. And then, of course, you have my mother. And then the teacher is all of the influential teachers in my life. And I don't know if you had, you had a chance, but I dedicated the book to all of the teachers in my life who made a tremendous impact in my life. And so that's who the teacher represents.
Okay.
A bit of both.
Okay, I see you, I got you, I got you. I'm right there with you, I understand. And that, you know, a lot of times, I always tell people, our journey is not for us alone. It is for others as well. So if you were able to, you know, maybe bring in, you know, your, the aspect of your life that this can relate to, that helps others. And people, oh, she went through that, okay, I can make. Um, and people, oh, she went through that, okay, I can make it, I can, you know, I can do this if I just try. Uh, and they, they see, you know, especially children, like the uh, young girl that figured out it was you. You know, maybe she was just able to relate, you know, and, and understand, and and it probably made her feel good to know, it's somebody I'm seeing right here, she's tangible. It's not just, you know, this mystery person or whatever, uh, it's, she's right in front of me, this is Terry. Okay, and I see what she's doing now, so that means I can, I can, if I just try. So that, that alone uh, would be an encouragement to them, so. Uh, but yeah, thanks for being, you know, transparent and sharing that you are Terry.
I am Terry, and I love to, you know, just go out into the world and tell people that, you know? For kids, they have to see themselves in us as adults. We have to lead by example, we have to show them the way in which they should go, right? And if we don't do it, then they're gonna be a little hesitant. And so, yes, like, that's what I say. Storytime with Mother Dove is real, and it's an experience, so that my children can really, really see me, but also see my character and who they can be as well.
Okay, alright, so, um, did we talk about how we got to the Mother Dove name? How did you become Mother Dove?
Well, um, a lot of people like the, to be honest, a lot of people like to think it's because I'm a member of Zeta Phi Beta Swardi Incorporated, that is not true. You know, yes, we, you know, we, we have the dove, right? But that's not why I chose that name. So Mother Dove, for me, simply means, when I was, when I was young, when I became a teenager, people used to always call me Mother Teresa. And so I wanted to take that aspect of it, right? I wanted to take the motherly aspect, the nurturing aspect that I tend to bring into anyone's world that I'm around. So that's where the mother piece comes um, in. Dove piece is because I, doves um, represent um, peace and serenity and, and love and kindness, and you know, that nurturing piece. And I just wanted to put both of them together, and so that's where Mother Dove came from. And then I call my children, my students, um, my little doves, you know? Because I'm Mother Dove, and they're my little doves, and we, together, we gonna fly, you know?
How sweet, that's really sweet, okay?
Young doves, we taught to fly, that's right.
I love it, I love it. Oh man, okay, I see now, alright, I, I got my answer. Alright, cause I said you're affectionately known as Mother Dove. Okay, alright, so, um, when, okay, so the book came out in twenty-one, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Alright, and so, um, when you, you said you go around and you speak, and you also, um, was it, you also have a, I'm sorry, tutor, tutor? Okay, alright, so, when, when the book came out, how, how did your students receive this? Um, what, what was, what were their reactions?
Oh, a lot of excitement. Really? Really? You know, and, and still, when I, like, the newer ages that come into the building, and I have an opportunity to read to them, they're like, really? You wrote a book? Like, it's, it's a big deal, right? They don't get to see people, like, right there. And so, they were very excited, and everyone that um, has had the opportunity to read it thus far have just given me a lot of praise and said, it's a really good book, great illustrations by my, my illustrator, Tyra Gaultier. You know, I mean, the journey has been amazing thus far.
Okay, okay, that's beautiful, that's beautiful. So what, what were, uh, would you say, um, was most important to you to be able to have in this book? Was it the illustrations, or um, another aspect of the book, you know, to be able to get the point across? What, what was important to you as you were writing this book?
Well, I'll have to say one thing was important, was that I needed her to at least look a bit like me. So I took, I, I sent him a whole bunch of pictures. I said, she is me, so she has to look like me.
Right, I get it.
I sent him, you know, with my pigtails and everything, right? So that was one important aspect of the book, and then of course, the basketball piece, because basketball is a really important, um, basketball is really important to me. Um, it's a sport that I have played all my life, my dad um, was my coach growing up. Um, he used to call me his little champion, you know, and so that was, that was very important. And then, um, it's not very noticeable all the time, but she also has a monkey on her shirt and on her shoes. And so that's because it was one of my, it was my favorite, you know, animal, little monkeys. And so, I, I wanted to incorporate that, and just the idea of her being able to um, teach kids the importance of affirming and believing who they are, right? So I want them to say, I can. I can, you know, and so the, the title, I spent a lot of time just really trying to dig deep into coming up with a great title for the book that had purpose.
Okay, hmm, I love it, I love it, alright. Well, good, I mean, it, it, you know, when you're writing, um, and maybe when you finish writing, you're like, okay, this is gonna go out to the world. I want to make sure that it, it's bringing out, you know, what you, you know, needed to. Um, and you, you don't want to miss anything, you know what I mean? And so I, so it's important, so I, I like the little key, where you talk about the shirt and the, and the other articles of clothing with the monkey on it. So it's probably, um, people kind of have to look real good, you know, or pay attention to that?
They do.
Okay, okay, well, good, good stuff, alright.
For it, so, you know, but that's further down the line.
Okay, alright, so, um, is this going to be a series?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay, and, but this is the first book?
This is the first book.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. I, I saw, I saw a picture, um, and you were, you were holding the book, and it was, it was really cute picture. I think you had the books like kind of laid around you, and I'm like, that's wonderful, that, that's great advertisement, number one. Um, but yeah, and, and I think it's, it's something, it, it was inviting, you know, and I think when children see that, uh, parents see it as well, that they would, you know, want to purchase it and buy it. Now, where, where can they find, find your book, before, before we go further?
Okay, so yeah, the book is available on Amazon, but it is also available on my website, which is www dot mother doves with an S, kids with an S, dot com. And there you will not only receive a copy of the book, but it will be a signed, personal copy from me, as well as a little trinket, um, and a little package to, just to warm your hearts when you receive it. Um, so you can get that on, on my website, but it is also available, Amazon, Barnes and Noble online, as well as Walmart online.
Okay, alright, so I want to make sure that I get that website, um, I have mother, is it mother or with S?
Mother, just mother.
Mother Doves?
Doves with an S. Kids with an S, dot com.
Okay, alright.
Slash shop, so they'll know it's in the shop, you know, area, you could put that too.
Is it the shop on, on the website, the shop area? Okay, okay, alright guys, I'm, I'm gonna put this into the comment section on Facebook. Um, let me see, shop, shop section, okay. And we want to make sure that you guys know where to go and publish, I'm sorry, and purchase. Purchase this wonderful, wonderful book, I, I just, I just, again, I, I love the concept. Um, make sure I have it right, you want to look on the screen, Mother Doves Kids, is that right? Okay, in the shop, okay, it did come up on here. Wonderful, wonderful, and then you're gonna also go to Amazon, Walmart, Barnes and Noble, did you say anything else?
All of those are online.
Correct, okay, alright, wonderful. So you guys have no excuse, you know where to get her book, and um, you know, read it to your children. Um, you can also, I think she also does speaking engagements, I believe you can also go in. Would they go to, what website would they go if they want to book you?
Same one, you can. Yep, motherdoveskids.com, I do story times around the city of Chicago, which are titled Storytime with Mother Dove. They're fun enrichment activities alongside um, with the reading of the book, as well as I do a speaking engagements for um, teachers and parents, just trying to build self-confidence in our children and teaching them that way.
I love it, I love it. Now, let me ask you before we end, is this your mantra, a good teacher is like a candle? It consumes itself to light the way for others. And this, uh, is that, is that your mantra? Okay, I love, well, how did you come to this mantra?
Well, um, it's something that I really try to do, right? Um, and uh, you see a candle, it continues to light the way for the, for the world, right? And so, I just wanted to make sure that I came up with something that was unique, and so I started putting things together. And yeah, I, I don't know, it's just something that has been stuck with me since I started teaching, which was a long time ago.
Don't go back to that fifteen, cause I'mma keep saying you look like a fifteen.
That's a good thing.
It is, it really is, I, I get that, black don't crack, I hope I don't offend nobody, but it don't. It's just the truth anyhow. Alright, so then this is beautiful. Can you wrap us up with uh, maybe a line or two words of encouragement to those who are watching or will watch later, um, whether it's authors or anybody else, just a word of encouragement?
Absolutely. What I tell my kids, you can do anything if you just try. You can do anything if you just try. That message speaks not only to our children, but us as adults as well. Sometimes we get so caught up in the fear, sometimes we get so caught up of not wanting to go after our goals. But God didn't tell us that, right? He can do, we can do anything if we just try. All we have to do is really just try, he gives us the power, he gives us the strength. You know, he is amazing, and so just keep, keep going, don't stop.
Don't stop. Alright guys, you heard it, you heard it here, from Teresa Smith Hickman, AKA Mother Dove. Was in the house with us on tonight, make sure you guys go to the website, motherdoveskids.com. Purchase her book either there, Amazon, Walmart, Barnes and Noble, all online. Uh, you won't miss it, and you can also book her on her website as well, if you're interested. Uh, thank you so much for your time on this evening, and um, being able to come on here to talk about your book, and uh, again, congratulations on the nomination. Uh, will you be attending the gala in Las Vegas?
I'll be there.
I will see you there then. It'll, it'll be wonderful to meet you in person, so again, congratulations on the nomination. We just bid you Godspeed in everything that you are doing. Uh, I think it's a wonderful work that you're doing, and I pray that you would continue on, and God would just continue to bless you in every way.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and same to you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Will you take care, alright? Okay, bye-bye. As she's exiting, we're gonna come on with our last guest for tonight. Uh, again, we are focusing and featuring Distinguished Author Guild nominees on tonight. We started off, of cour- of course, with Gina Gadsden, the founder, CEO of Dag, uh, she's one of the founders. And she came on, talked to us, uh, I want to talk to her, us about her own um, story, her own journey, but then also to talk about Distinguished Authors Guild, and um, where all these nominees are, are uh, coming from. They're nominated through this particular guild. And so my last guest on this evening, let me get it, I, let me get it, let me get it, she's gonna wrap us up. Last but not least, we have coming to the stage is Tekisha, Tekisha Wade. And I pray that I pronounced her name right, I always say, your name is you, so I pray. You said it right, Miss Annette, hey, Miss Annette. How are you doing?
I'm doing good, how you doing today?
I'm doing wonderful, it has been a, a wonderful time tonight, talking with uh, individuals on tonight with the, the Distinguished Authors Guild, I'm just gonna say Dag, when I say the whole name, it just takes it a lot away. Tell, talk Dag on tonight.
It's okay.
It's a pleasure to meet you virtually, um, and congratulations to you as well on your nomination. Uh, we're, we're just grateful that, that uh, God has blessed us thus far, so let's hop right in, let's hop right in. Let me just read a little bit what I have on you. Yeah, and you know, Tekisha got all these uh, different uh, uh, names behind her name. Uh, Tekisha Wade, DD, CRC, CLC. So she's an international certified life coach, a self-healing recovery coach, and a leadership coach. Uh, she also serves as, as the founder slash CEO of Open Arms Connection LLC, and OAC Recovery Center, including the co-founder of the Living Free From Fear Movement. I haven't looked up y'all, cause I'm trying to get these names right. She serves men and women providing coaching and instruction on domestic violence and narcissistic abuse in safe places and spaces that encourage survivors and victims to deeply connect with and explore their inner self. In addition, she's a global speaker, a number one bestselling author, go ahead, my queen, executive producer of It's Your Time to Heal. Let's Talk on BHC Media Network, welcome again to Keisha Wade.
Thank you so much, yes, I do a lot, Miss Annette.
Honey, look, I read it, okay, I see, I see you do. I ain't even mad at you either, I'm not even mad at your girl, do you think? You know, we don't do it, it won't get done, right?
No, you better say that, yes ma'am.
Alright, come on, let's talk to me, you know, cause I'm reading all this, and I'm like, okay, wait minute, what's the name of her book?
Yes ma'am. Okay, so I have several books, but this book right here is so dear to my heart. This is just so dear to my heart, The Power of Breaking the Silence, The Blueprint of a Survivor. I am the visionary author, and, and God showed me that I needed to bring some women with me to tell their journey, and not just mine, because we decided to break the silence, and we decided to heal out loud.
Come through now, come through, okay, alright. And now, uh, when, when was this published?
Um, this was published in the beginning of this year, it is on Amazon. You know, I, we had it ready, but we had to do some last minute changes. And I, no, it was last year, because I decided to publish it for um, October this month, um, like this month, the Honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So it was last year, uh, in the month of October, yes ma'am.
Gotcha, okay, alright, okay, so, talk to me, give me a little bit of history behind, cause that's obvi- obviously, is that an anthology?
It's an anthology, yes ma'am.
Okay, so give me a little bit of background, um, the name of the book again, let me type the correct name.
Okay, um, the book is called The Power of Breaking the Silence.
Power of Breaking the Silence, uh-huh.
And the blue, and it's gonna be, the blue underneath is gonna be The Blueprint of a Survivor. And the reason why I decided to name it The Power of Breaking the Silence, The Blueprint of a Survivor, because this is a blueprint. This is, this is just like, you picking up the map, the directions to breaking your silence. Now, each one of these women, story, the reason why I decided to bring the women, my um, lovely co-authors with me, because each one is gonna touch someone. If I was in this book alone, I know I probably would have touched several women, but just imagine how many stories that's different in here, that's gonna touch and help someone else break their silence.
Ooh wee, okay, alright, alright. Take me into the background, take me into the background, how did we even come to say, I want to write this book? Or I want to create an anthology and have other women, um, you know, partake in with me? Is there history, is there background?
There is history, and, and I have to really collect myself, because when I, when I think about the history, it's a breakthrough each time I talk about it.
Alright now.
So it's, when I talk about it, it's the becoming of me, each time I talk about it, because of the history. So I want to start from the beginning. You know, I was born in the eighties, so I grew up, my parents are in their sixties. And we grew up that what stays in the house, what's done in the house, was done in the home. Stays in the home. And we were, and women especially, you know, when they talk this toxic biblical- biblical principles, women were, women were basically taught to be quiet. So my emotions, I built so many emotions up during my childhood. And I, and I had to tell my mom and dad. I had to really open up and let them know, Mom, Dad, I hope you all know that I endured abuse with you all. It started at home.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it started trickling down into relationships. Ship with myself. And I just started seeing a pattern. And I would say the biggest pattern, when I started dating and then I eventually got married, um, I would say the beginning of my twenties. And I started enduring what we call this narcissistic abuse. Now, we knew nothing of that term. No one knew narcissist, you know, what a narcissist was, you know, what is a narcissist? And so the history was I endured that type of abuse, the gaslighting, the love bombing, the mental anguish, the emotional abuse, sometimes even physical. And I wasn't educated on it. So I didn't know how to escape. I didn't know how to even work through my emotions. So as I go down the history of this pain of scared to even talk about it because I thought people wouldn't believe me, and I felt so alone because I felt like no one else understood. Or I felt so alone because no one else was, decided to move with me or educate me on it. So I decided, you know what, we need to write, we need to get this book out. We need to write this book. We need to put these stories together. So no one else can feel like they're alone. They have no hope. And when you talk about this more and more and more, the more and more is gonna settle in and someone's gonna realize, oh my God, I was in a narcissistic abuse, domestic violence relationship. So I said, we need to get this story out here because we, I, we had one that talked about the military. I even experienced, um, one of the narcissists, which is in this book, that was in the military. And we talk about it because everything is covered up in the military. They have so much. And so then you got one young lady that was beat half to death, threw in a garbage can. Um, one was left for dead. You had one that was strangled, left for dead. So when you read these stories and you put it in a book, it's gonna touch someone to say, you know what, I have hope. Or other authors out there that's scared to write their story, this is gonna help them. So basically, this like, you know, this, this is what is like, what it looks like to be bold. And so we had to write it. Our history had to be written so people can see it and they can receive their breakthrough. They can receive their freedom.
Okay, okay. Ooh wee, you gave me a good background there. I love the, I love the title, The Power of Breaking the Silence. So many people suffer in silence. And sometimes they don't know which way to turn. They don't know what to say or who to even say it to.
Correct, correct.
Then, majority of the time, they don't even realize they're suffering.
Correct. And that's the, that is the re- one, that was another reason why I decided to push this book immediately. Because they don't know unless they're educated. Because when you start talking about it and you start writing about it and you start pushing that education out there, they're gonna see, oh my God. Oh wow, this is what I really endured. Oh my God, what, real- And now you have a resource. Now you have, this book is a resource. Because not only are the women that's in the book with me, they were writing, but they're also coaches as well and advocates. So you start, it starts here with the support. They can reach out to one of us. We understand. I have a platform. I'm a coach. I'm a licensed ordained minister. I'm a counselor. Here I go. If I can't help you, I will point you in a direction. So we get that book out there on Amazon. We get this out in national, internationally, globally. People in Africa, people in France, Canada, everyone's experiencing this type of abuse.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's all over. It's not, uh, you know, just in certain, uh, parts of the country or certain parts of the world. It's all over. Um, it, it's different genders, um, male, female, you know, it, it, it doesn't matter. It's happening. Um, now again, whether people kinda own up to it or realize that this is what they're experiencing, then, yeah, that, that, that's a different story. But then when you have books like this, anthologies like this that is able to bring it to the forefront, um, so that they will be able to, to address it, number one. And you, I, I, I see and feel that you're letting them know you're not alone. You're definitely not alone. Um, you can, you can make and you can get through it. How did you get to, cuz how many other women is, is it four?
Uh, it's gonna be, uh, six plus myself, six women and myself, the visionary, yes ma'am.
Okay. And so how did you come to, um, select these individuals?
I'ma be honest with you. It was the Holy Spirit. And, and I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I like to explain. So I, I posted on Facebook and I, I put a post out there for everyone. And I stated, anyone that wants to participate in this anthology and tell your story and break free yourself just by writing, you're also breaking free. So I gave that opportunity for people to not only break free and speak their, their truth, I also wanted to give them that platform where they can be, if they wanted to be an author, this is your chance right here. So I posted and I had several women, several women that signed up. However, unfortunately, they dropped off. And, and it just, I mean, they dropped off on their own. And I was okay with it because I see the woman that's supposed to be in this book is gonna stay.
Oh man, you know, you reminded me of that script. I don't know where it's found, but when they were trying to get the armies together and then they had to weed out and some of them were down on their hands, they lapping up in their head. And it finally got down to a certain number. I was like, I can use that. You know, you had, you had all these, you know, hundreds of, of, of people to, to fight. And then I think it came down to what was less than a hundred or something like that. God knows what he's doing. So I, I feel you when you said the Holy Spirit guided and directed you. And I'm sure that made you feel, um, really good, you know, in knowing that you were doing what he wanted you to do. And, you know, he's like, okay, you, you having me do this, now you gonna have to take control and do all this. And you say, you didn't worry about it when those pu- when different ones pulled out.
I didn't because I knew who's supposed to be there, supposed to be there. And at first, it did hurt a little bit. It stung. But God said, the Holy Spirit showed me, you're not being rejected. It's not that it's something wrong with you, Tekisha, in the book. It's just that it wasn't their time right now.
I was just about to say that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it's amazing. And you know, God has his plan again. Maybe their time will be, you know, with somebody else or another time with you. Who knows? Yeah, it may, it's, it's just wasn't the time then. Oh wow, that, that's amazing. That kinda gets you a little goosebumps, you know?
It does. It does. You can feel it. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Yeah, God was definitely with you. And then, uh, you said something in that when you first put out the, uh, advertisement, if you will, to publish that this is what you were gonna do. You said to them, if you want to write, but then if you also want to heal, if you wanna heal. And that, oh my God, that is so, that in itself is key right there. Uh, and that will do a lot of the weeding out, you know? Uh, because some people, I always say, the quickest way to get help is to admit you need it. So that's when, when I bring in saying, talking about, sometimes people don't realize that they're in that position and that they need that help. So, you know, you had to weed out those, those different ones, you know? Didn't feel like they needed it. They did feel like they didn't need the healing. But when they get a hold of that book though, they're gonna be like, okay, I needed this.
I should've did it. I should've did it. Because it's not just a book, Miss Annette. It's actually, it's gonna be a movie. And, and, and I really, this is my first time saying it in, on, out like this. But we're working on a documentary slash movie for this. I'm gonna write a script because I feel like when people see this in, because I, my plan is movie theater. That's where, even if it's just a, a small viewing in, in certain cities. Or just when, you know, if I can pitch it out to Tubi or, you know, just so that people can see it. And I just know they'll be like, oh my God, I should've. But again, you have to, you have to admit that you need the healing and it's okay to heal even just writing. It, and like you said, if it's their time, cuz I'm thinking about doing a volume two.
Okay, alright.
They, if it, if it was me, if it's meant to be volume two, they'll be there.
That's right. They'll be there. Whatever number volume you get up to, you know, if it's, if it's meant, it'll, it'll work out. I love it. I love it. I love it. Um, obviously, you know, you, you have a heart for people and you want people to be helped. Um, you know, as well in their situations. And, um, then, you know, not only, you know, helping them in their situations, but I believe this book can be used as a preventive maintenance as well. You know, to make sure that people don't necessarily, and they could read your book and, okay, I know what to avoid. Yeah, I see that narcissistic behavior over there. Let me get away from that. I don't wanna be involved with that. So it can be an op- an eye-opening, you know, um, situation to them. Um, talk, talk about a little bit of the feedback that you've received, um, since your book has been published.
Um, the feedback that I did receive with some of the individuals that did buy the book, they did say that they relate. It was each individual related to one of the women or all of the women in the book. And the feedback was, it helped me see some things or see definitions that I never knew of. Um, and I really couldn't understand, like I even talked about love addiction in here. And most people are like, that. So it was an eye-opener and an aha moment. And people said they felt like the spirit through the book.
Okay, okay.
So some, you know, I did have one review where a young lady said, you know, it was just one I just didn't resonate with, but it was a good story, but I did just go past and go on to another story. That's just feedback saying, you know, you may not relate to everybody. You may just relate to one. And so the feedback I've gotten was very positive. And I would say neutral was the one where they said, well, you know, I felt like I couldn't get past this one, but I kept reading.
Right, okay, alright, okay. Obviously, they were being transparent.
Very transparent, exactly.
Okay, well, that's good. Um, what, what about your support as you were writing this book? Now, wait, let me back up. This is not your first book though, right?
No ma'am, this is, I believe, my fifth. My fifth, and then I have one that's coming out pretty soon, my own, but, you know, of my story.
Were the other books anthologies or?
Yes, ma'am. They were anthologies. And, and I asked God, I said, God, I'm in all these anthologies. When am I gonna release mine? You know, because it was just still, cuz I've been writing this, I, I've, I was done. But God, God had me, um, just waiting for the release. And so it's been five years I have been holding on to it. Now it's ready and good to go.
See, see there, God's timing. Teresa just talked about that cuz she started writing that book in, what she said, twenty seventeen, and it wasn't published until twenty twenty-one. God's timing. He knows, he knows all things. He knows when it needs to come out. You, you know, you may get an unction or he may encourage you, no, I need you to do this, I need you to do that, I need you to write, alright, write. Like, okay, you're on it. You're like, okay, I gotta hurry up and get this out. He just told you to start writing. He didn't tell you exactly when. Maybe not all the time. You know, he didn't tell you upfront, but just, just trust and believe that he has a, he definitely has a plan. He has a plan. So as, as you were writing this one, cuz obviously this, you, you mentioned that this particular book was kinda like your, your heart and soul and you're, you really put a lot into it. Um, as you were writing it, talk about the support that you received, uh, while writing this. Or, or what did your support system look like?
Well, I'ma be honest with you, Miss Annette. Um, my support system was my family. I did have support around me, but I must say, I was in the wilderness at this time. I had, you know, you have the support. Okay, you know, you have the means of support around you. But God had me alone for this one. And, and what I mean alone, he had me in solitude in the wilderness journaling. He actually, I was actually writing this as I was going through the abuse.
Ooh, okay, I see you. I see you. I get it.
So just when the solitude came in, I was in the abuse. So as I was writing, it was, it was a journal entry. I turned this into my story in the book, my journal entry. Because I asked God, I said, okay, God, everything I'm doing is book written, right? I'm writing a book. I'm writing this story. But when you, but when you, you go back and you think, all the individuals that's going through things or in their healing journey or they're writers or authors, they're journaling. Some people don't know what right looks like when it's journaling. So when I started journaling, I just, I was just writing. I didn't, I didn't care if it was, the punctuation was correct. I didn't care. I was just flowing. So I said, God, you know what, I'ma put my journal entry in here so people can know how to start their journal. Journal entry with some words of encouragement, eh, encouragement, can't talk tonight, encouragement in this chapter in the book.
Beautiful, beautiful. Ooh wee, see, sometimes we don't know. I mean, we don't know. We're like, okay, why am I going through this and you, uh. You say you were wilderness as you were writing, and that is what God uses to help somebody else. He's helping you. But, you know, he, he wants everybody else to be helped. Ooh.
And Miss Annette, and I do wanna say this, I'm sorry, um, like now, you know, I, I wanted to get up and I wanted, you know, of course, I wanted to look presentable, but I was like, God, okay, I gotta throw on my lip gloss. I had to, oh, my face, oh God, I gotta look good. I got, oh, my face, oh, my, my hair. And God said, no, I want you to come as you are on this show tonight. He said, I want you to show people that you still healing, even though you are still writing, you wrote this book, you still on interviews. I still want you to do my work. You still doing my work. You still doing my work in your healing process, even when it don't feel good. And when you don't feel good and you don't feel like you look good. He said, jump on this show, get on this show and you show them, Tekisha. Show them who you are when you in the, in the, that, when you, when you, you're a diamond. But let them know when you, when you in the, in the trenches sometimes. I'm going through it. I'm in the midst of, in this healing journey, I have my days. And one of them are, the, today, I was so tired, I was so drained. But I said, God, I got to be for your people. I got to bring the people. I don't care how I look, but I- I don't care how I look, but I got to do this. And I said, I got to come as I am today. And I said, Lord, I, I, I'm sorry for Miss Annette. I hope I don't look too bad. But I just want people to know that healing looks ugly sometimes.
That's it. That's it right there. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Mm, mm, mm. You say you're an ordained minister. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes ma'am.
Mm-hmm, I hear it. I hear it. I need to give you, I had a preacher on the other day. He was talking about his book. He had his sweat towel like he was in the pulpit. I need to throw a sweat towel over there. Then you act like you're in the pulpit right now, but I love it. I love it. I love it. Healing, what'd you say? Is sometimes ugly.
It's sometimes ugly.
But, but the fact, you, you said, you said healing, which means it's still a process. It's still a process.
It's never ending.
Yeah.
Healing is a lifestyle.
Hmm.
Because you're gonna heal from something daily, actually. Because something's gonna hurt you. Something's gonna make you feel like, huh, you're healing because there's layers of you. It's layers that's, 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 that's dropping, that you got to touch base with. It may be your anxiety. It may be your depression. It may be your CPTSD. It may be your PTSD. There's layers to that. Healing doesn't happen overnight.
No, gotta take time for it. And we have to understand that and then to know that we're, we're gonna get there. It's not, you know, going to elude us, our healing, you know, just trusting God, you know, for him to direct you into the way that you need to go so that you can receive it. So that, that's, that's good encouraging right there. Good encouraging words. Wow. That's deep. You were still, you were still in the wilderness as you were writing. Okay, alright. For your family and those.
Right.
What's that?
Miss Annette, I'm sorry, cause it's not a destination. But go ahead. You could go and finish some of ours. I'm sorry, I just got in the spirit.
Uh, we, we're trying, we're trying to be, we're trying to highlight you. So if you wanna talk to us about something, that's fine. You said something about a destination. What did you say?
It's, and I, and I tell, I tell people, I coach and people that's around me that it's not a destination. Healing is gonna be continuous. You, you know, we always wanna rush to a stopping point. No.
And, and that's, and you're right, cause that's human nature. We don't wanna be hurt. We don't have to even be in a position to even say, I need to be healed. We don't want that. That's who wants to say. You know?
Right.
I'm wrong. Right. They don't want, they don't want to have to say that, but wow. Healing, I, I'm, I'm still stuck back at healing is, is sometimes ugly. I'm, I'm, I'm still stuck on that, but it's so true. It is so true. Wow. This is deep. Um, man, man, man. Um, I, I wanna encourage you to continue, you know, whatever God has given you to do. And this is, this is, this is truly a ministry, you know? Because there's so many, again, that are hurting and so many that are going through silently. They're suffering silently. Um, so whatever the next volume is that's gonna come out, you know, what have you. Um, you know, I, I pray that God will bless you to be able to do that. Guys, if you're just not watching, you, you need to get this book. She is on Amazon. Uh, Tekeisha Wade. I put the link, I placed the link in the comment section on Facebook, guys. So, uh, Amazon, the actual link. So you can just click on that and go straight to her book. The Power of Breaking the Silence, The Blueprint of a Survivor. Phew. Those words in itself are deep. It's an anthology series. And if you look at that cover, good God almighty. I can't even show the, I would love to show the cover on here. But if you look at that cover, ooh, it, there you go. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You can look and see, ooh, that is gonna be a book that you need to get. I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna tell that right there. Um, and while you're reading it, you can heal. You can, you can heal. Definitely heal. Uh, final words of encouragement that you wanna share with my guests, uh, or, uh, those that are watching on today and those that will watch. Some final words of encouragement from, uh, Minister Tekeisha Wade.
Yes ma'am. Thank you, Miss Annette. And you, a- amen. You know, I wanna tell y'all, it's, it's truly okay to not be okay. I know you hear it a lot, but I gotta tell you that tonight. And take some time out for yourself.
Yeah.
With yourself. Build that relationship with God. I know you hear a lot of people that's in the religious mindset, that's always talking about God, this God. But I'm telling you, as a woman of God and a child of God, build that relationship with him because he's gonna show you what your identity is. He's gonna show you your ID, your blueprint, your fingerprint. Just remember this, you, your fingerprint, no one else has it. No one else has it. Let him show you who you are.
That's right.
Do that mirror gazing. And I just wanna encourage you to love on yourself and take those days off. Whether it's on your job, or you gotta take a break from the kids.
Do it.
Take a break. Get some me time in, because I'm telling you, that's gonna catapult you to levels. Levels that the oxygen down here can't, can't sustain because you're gonna be too much up there. Your oxygen level is waiting. And God needs you up there.
Okay, okay. Ooh wee. I hope y'all was picking up what she was putting down. That was deep. That was deep in and of itself, you know? I'm telling you, this has been tremendous. I wanna thank you for your time, uh, for being transparent with us on this evening and sharing, uh, about your journey, a little bit about your journey. Uh, we see now why your, it seems like your, uh, passion is toward domestic violence and narcissistic abuse. Um, and for bringing that out and helping us to understand a little bit more and those who are watching. Um, you won't be disappointed if you go and check out her book. Go to the confection, um, I have her name, The Power of Breaking the Silence, The Blueprint of a Survivor. That survivor could be you. It could be you. So make sure you check her out and, um, all the nominees, um, that I, I have already interviewed, will be interviewing. Uh, make sure you guys check them out. Let's support one another and encourage one another as well. So, uh, and thank you, congratulations again on your nomination. And if you're, if you, are you gonna be in Las Vegas in November next month?
I'm working on it. I said, God, you gotta get me out there. If I don't, I, I, I'm still here with you. Um, but yes ma'am, I'm, I'm working hard to get out there.
Okay, alright. Well, prayerfully, it, it, uh, we will see you there and, you know, um, I'll get a chance to meet you in person. Uh, if, if that's the case, but, uh, we are just praying that God will just continue to bless you in everything you do.
Yes ma'am. Thank you, Miss Annette.
You're so welcome. You take care of yourself.
Thank you for having me. Love you.
Alright, take care. Alright, guys, um, as she's exiting, this is, this has really been a great, 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 uh, segment on tonight. Um, I have been highlighting, uh, started off tonight highlighting, uh, Distinguished Authors Guild. I started off with, uh, the founder Gina Gadsden. Uh, and then I interviewed two of the nominees. Um, the first one, Teresa Hickman, Teresa Smith Hickman, also known as Mother Dove. And also I just finished with Tekeisha Wade. And these women brought it tonight. Do you hear me? They brought it. I'm so proud of my sisters. I, I've just met them. I'm so proud of these queens. They are doing their thing and, you know, they have their different platforms, their different ministries, and they're helping people. And notice what it's all about, cause it has nothing to do with us per se at all. It has everything to do with God. Um, so I want to encourage those of you that are watching, that will watch, um, that have peeped in and, you know, maybe you didn't say anything. You've just, you know, listened to us talk on tonight. Please, please, please support, support this gala. You can support the gala by purchasing a ticket. You can purchase a virtual ticket or an in-person ticket. Some of you may say, I don't live in Vegas. I don't have plans to go to Vegas. It's fine. You can get a virtual ticket. Uh, we encourage you to do so because the, the proceeds of you purchasing a ticket, uh, or the ticket purchases will go towards, uh, scholarships for college freshmen. And if you did not hear, Gina Gadsden said, we're trying to get ten scholarships, ten one thousand scholarships. So ten scholarships worth a thousand dollars each for these college freshmen. We wanna encourage them. Um, it could be your freshman that receives it. I don't know, uh, your student or you or whoever. But let's encourage, um, Distinguished Authors Guild by purchasing a ticket. Please do so. Uh, now, I have been pushing, uh, or letting you know that if you're gonna support me directly, you can use the code SASH, S A S H. And, um, or, you know, if you just wanna say, I'm supporting Distinguished Author Guild, that's fine too. But I have put in the comment section, I actually just copied over, um, Gina Gadsden's post about how you can, uh, purchase a ticket. It tells you what the ticket is going for. So if you look in the comment section, um, it says here, we're hoping that everyone is able to support. Your ticket purchase, uh, goes towards a scholarship that will assist one young person in their future, uh, shining, uh, bright. If you're not able to go to Vegas, you can purchase a virtual ticket. Go to Eventbrite. The link is in the comments. The link is in the comments. Please go to Eventbrite. I'm gonna probably try maybe starting Sunday or next day or two. Really, really continuing to push this particular, um, event, encouraging you to purchase your ticket, virtual or in-person ticket. Um, I am, yeah, we really want you to do that, okay? Uh, we wanna encourage our young people and we know that they can use it. You know, student loans are out the wazoo. Any scholarship can help, whether it's toward books or classes or what have you. It can definitely help. And we wanna push and encourage them to continue on with their education. Um, so yeah, again, go to Eventbrite, Distinguished Authors Guild. And, um, you, I promise you, you won't be disappointed. Do you hear me? You will not be disappointed. Alright, so, uh, take care of yourselves, guys. Uh, remember, we'll be back Wednesday. You can look, I'm gonna show the promo. We'll be back Wednesday for more Distinguished Author Guild nominees to interview them. Um, in this final or in promo, you will see who will be up. I think I have four scheduled on Wednesday. Then we have a few more on Friday, the thirteenth, and then the following Wednesday, the eighteenth. So the next three sessions of Mind Body and Soul with Annette will feature Distinguished Author Guild nominees. So I don't want you guys to miss it. Make sure you tag someone, share, love, heart, care button. All that you can do for us, we would really, really appreciate it. Um, and many of you that have come on that didn't say anything, I see Michelle Thomas hopped on, Prince Vince. Um, Alyssa, thanks for coming in, Darian Williams. Uh, let's see, other names. If I did not call your name, charge to my head, not my heart. I'm just trying to scroll through. If you didn't say anything, I'm not able to see that you, uh, showed up for us, but thank you, thank you for coming in. Those that will watch this later, um, I appreciate you as well. Uh, YouTube, Facebook, um, A Naked Connet and Mind Body and Soul with Annette. We will upload this, uh, maybe like a link or so to our Instagram at Get Caught In A Net for you. Alright guys, I'm gonna get out of here. It's Friday night. Um, enjoy your Friday night. Thanks for coming in and joining me on today. Look at the promo for next, uh, for the next session. Take care. On the next session of Get Caught Internet.